Krista Hollab.
Here.
Christine Disney.
Here.
Danielle Gravy.
Here.
Patrick Quinn.
Here.
Will Kearns.
Michael Moore.
Here.
And Ciara Maquiones is absent tonight.
The next item is approving the order of tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any changes to that order? Seeing none, the agenda will stand as published. Next, we will vote to approve the minutes for my last meeting. Are there any changes to the minutes?
There are no minutes.
There are no minutes, all right, moving on. We will now open the general interest public forum. Is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak?
No.
Do we have anyone online?
Nobody online.
All right, thank you. I will now close that meeting. We don't have a general hearing tonight, but we do have a presentation from CZB regarding our city plan. And so whoever would like to go first, staff can present that for us.
Great, thank you. There we go. Works, that was very smooth. I'm Ellis Devie, I'm a senior planner and the project manager for the city plan. And I'm joined here with Eric Amy from CZB. And we're excited to dive into the city plan a little bit with you all here tonight. So, okay. So tonight, we're going to step through a few things. I'll give a brief project overview and updates, talk a little bit about the engagement and our focus areas concept. Eric is then going to walk us through the place type framework. Then we're going to pause and we're going to have a discussion about that. Thank you. And then, once we've talked about that, we will, Eric will then present the mobility framework and we'll again pause and discuss that a little bit. And then we'll briefly cover next steps. Okay, so our project overview. The city plan will update our existing comprehensive plan or envision Wheat Ridge. A successful city plan will articulate the community's vision and establish shared values. It will identify priorities for the future, provide a decision-making framework for the future, and guide investments and actions of many parties, including property owners, residents, elected officials, and staff. So Planning Commission will use the city plan to evaluate things like rezonings, once the plan is adopted. So really want to hear your feedback on the plan now to make sure that it will provide the right guidance as cases come before you in the future. So in other words, a great plan gets the big things right. It plans for what is known and it creates a decision-making framework for what is unknown. The city plan has been a, it's been informed and guided by the Wheat Ridge community through several methods of engagement that we'll talk about on the following slides. So we have multiple engagement options. We've had a steering committee and city council and planning commission touchpoints like this one that we're doing here tonight. So in each of the four phases of this plan process, community members can participate in online surveys or in in-person events. They both have the same content and that allows folks to engage in whatever way it works best for them. Then we have the project webpage, that's been up throughout the process. That's where people can subscribe to project updates and review content that has been created and vetted so far. And then we've had targeted intercepts, which we're calling events where the project team attends existing events in the community, so that people can come learn about the project without going out of their way. For example, we had booths at Performance in the Park, at the Lutheran Open House, Ridge Fest, and Carnation Festival. So here's an image of the project website where we currently have our online activities for this. They're active now for Phase Three. Those will be up until the end of next Friday, the 11th, at 5:00 PM. And then we have our, the project team meets with our 18-member steering committee of local stakeholders. We'll have six meetings throughout the process. We've had four of them so far. So this timeline shows how these four phases and everything we just talked about plugs into the calendar months. We're currently here in Phase Three that you can see, which is primarily, was primarily in September, but will wrap up this month. So we're still collecting input from Phase Three, as I mentioned. But I did want to take a moment here tonight to look back at the second phase, which we did in June, and talk a little bit about what we heard there. So in that round, we had city council small group discussions the week of June 3rd. We had our open house event, which many of you attended on June 6th. We had over 140 attendees at that. Then we had our steering committee meeting on the June 4th. And then Planning Commission, as you remember, became a little bit later in July on the 18th. We had our online survey was up on What's Up Wheat Ridge from May 24th through June 30th. We had nearly 400 responses to that. So in that round, the community confirmed three core values, four planning principles, and four planning priorities. And those will now set the foundation for everything else in the city plan. So as a reminder, those core values were that Wheat Ridge is independent-minded, inclusive, and forward-looking. The percentage of respondents who said they agree or mostly agree with each of these values are shown on the right. So then our planning principles are to serve a mix of incomes, preserve our patchwork quilt, focus on sustainability, and strengthen the city's fiscal position. And then the priorities are an improved retail and business environment, 38th Avenue from Lutheran, the Lutheran Legacy Campus to Harlan, a network of pedestrian and bicycle facilities, and proactive infrastructure management. So you can see that the support for all of these is above 70%, with most of them actually being above 80%. And I want to just pause here to see if you have any questions on what we've covered so far. I also want to ask, is this consistent with what you've been hearing from your neighbors, from your friends? Does this seem aligned with that? Is there anything you might have heard that we should know about?
I would just like a comment. I think the few comments I've heard about it are from people outside of Wheat Ridge who didn't think they could participate.
Okay.
So I don't know how we improve that, but I heard that from a few people.
Well, that's, that is good to know. We, I mean, our, our active outreach has been targeting people who live in Wheat Ridge, but we do try to say that anyone who lives, works, comes to recreate, shop, dine, pick up kids at school. So I can, I can kind of make sure our messaging is consistent with that, but you can certainly let folks know that they're welcome to weigh in. We do, when they register on What's Up Wheat Ridge, we do ask some basic demographic questions, including what's your affiliation? And so if we ever have something that we need to know, what do the residents feel? What are the, you know, we can kind of filter that and find that out, so.
I was, a couple of quick thoughts. Just in terms of the steering committee, I'm just kind of curious like how those conversations have been going. I mean, just in terms of like high-level takeaways as far as what types of issues that group was spending time discussing. I mean, I think it's amazing to have like just as high a numbers of input as possible, that's what you're aiming for, but at the same time, there's opportunities when you have these dedicated group of folks who are like a little bit more invested, who are on something like the steering committee. So like, it's, I'm sure it's important for you to get as much out of that group as possible, but I'm just curious if you could share anything about how those meetings have been going.
Sure. Yeah, we initially scheduled them actually to be 90 minutes because that just felt like an easier ask. After our first two meetings, we bumped that up to two hours because what we've been doing, we started one, they had a, by the time we had our public launch in our, what we're calling Phase One, the steering committee was on their second meeting. So we got them started a little earlier. And we have been bringing each, each of the subsequent meetings has aligned with one of our outreach phases. And we basically bring that content, but dive deeper, ask more follow-up questions. For example, in our current phase right now, we are having discussions about when there's new development, how to, how the city can facilitate peaceful coexistence. At our meeting and in, online, we're asking folks to just fill it out and respond individually. In the steering committee, we asked groups of five to come to consensus, to kind of challenge not just into all these individual opinions, but how does, how does the city weigh these different priorities and ideas? And so that's just one example of how we, exactly what we're saying. We try to get data from as many people as possible, but the steering committee has been the opportunity to dive a little bit deeper. We asked them to do a more involved exercise on helping us identify the focus areas, for example. So yes, we've been having pretty deep conversations and we have, you know, a lot of breakout groups and reporting out and it's, it's trying to get, we want to get information from people. We want to make sure we're really understanding what the community wants and needs. And we're also trying to build champions. So we want these people to take ownership and feel responsibility and pride for what is ultimately in the plan, so they can help implement it.
Cool. Okay, do you want to add anything? Or I mean, I, one quick follow-up, just like, when you, is it true that those folks were kind of identified and, and like the city reached out to them? Or I mean, I guess, is there an intention to have that group be kind of a cross-section of the different demographics in the city or folks that are involved in the business, you know, space or, you know, other areas of the, of the city? And was that, is that something that is, you know, intentionally done?
Yes. So we, we had a very intentional process. We, we came into this borrowing from previous plans with a list of different kind of focuses and areas of expertise. So we wanted to make sure we had people who were going to have some background in different topics that were going to be critical and, and pretty technical. Then we also wanted to make sure we had a geographic spread. And so we worked with council members who nominated a couple of people from each district to make sure we were covering the districts. We did also ask people to fill out, as we have at our first two meetings and online, a short demographic form to just be aware of how the makeup of the steering committee compares to the city at large. And so I wouldn't say we got a perfect match, but we got it as close as we could. And then what we've done is just kind of tailor our outreach to make sure we are getting, we're hearing from the folks who might not be represented well on the steering committee. But I'd say from all of the geographies and areas of interest and focus, we did get all of them covered from our list.
Cool. Nobody ever has the perfect representations during, it just doesn't happen. Do this, we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably better that you get, you know, people are going to be engaged and contribute. Then another quick thought I had, just out of curiosity, do you track like, how, in terms of the different phases of the survey, how many of those are like unique respondents? Or like, you know, is it the same 150 people that are doing it every time? Or are you able to dig deep and say like, Phase Two, we actually got a bunch of new people, which could maybe, you know, help you pull out your marketing efforts effectiveness or?
Yes. So, good question. And I wish that our engagement specialist, Ashley, was here to answer it in depth because she is the expert on that. But I do know that they, we do require people to register to participate in What's Up Wheat Ridge, which is a little bit annoying, but it means we can do exactly that. So I know that between Phase One and Phase Two, we, it was not just the same people. We actually got a lot of new people. Another technique that we're using is we are doing a lot of advertising through QR codes. So like you might have seen that there were coasters, a different restaurant runs that has a QR code. The different methods that we used, we used unique QR codes. So then we'll actually be able to go in and see how many people followed the link to our website based on the different methods of advertising. So we are collecting as much data as we can, both to, you know, we kind of evaluated who we'd reached in the, in Phase One and Two, and that helped inform our, our outreach for Phase Three, and we'll continue to do that.
Awesome. I guess the only other thought I had is, are you, were you looking to just talk about the core values and stuff at this point?
Probably. We weren't intending to spend time on that this evening, just because we talked about it the last time we were here. However, we, I think if there are, we, we're not, we're not looking to open them up too much just because of the high numbers that we got of confirmation on those. However, one of the, one of the next steps I'll talk about tonight is that we're going to dive into some pretty detailed content. And I know I'm personally someone who, I have a hard time reacting to very complex things right in the moment. Hope, you know, and I think that Eric's presentation of them will really supplement the presentation that you had in your packet. So I'm going to give you the opportunity, I'm going to send you high-resolution maps and you'll have the opportunity to mull it over on your own and then send me back comments. So I want to just say, I will limit that to the content that we're sending you. If you have additional thoughts that you want to send me, or if there's something you want to bring up this evening, we're, we're not going to dedicate time for that. We didn't set aside time for that or discussion questions, but if you have burning thoughts or dying to know.
No, I don't. The only thing, I mean, so just kind of looking it over, I guess, you know, one, just observation, just because, you know, for no real intention, but you know, the independent-minded value was the lowest of them, yeah, by a fair amount. And then you have the preserve our patchwork quilt, which was the top of the planning principles. And I just, you know, give a little thought about kind of how to pair that, you know, what are the people that answer one way versus the other? You know, what elements of that are stand out when you're kind of thinking about the plan as a whole and how these inform the more detailed components of it? This is just a thought experiment. It's all I want to point out.
Commissioner Shelkey?
Hi. Just a couple, maybe clarifications. What does network of pedestrian and bicycle facilities mean?
That means that our, what is built out in our city allows people to get around without being in a car. So it could be bike lanes, it could be sidewalks, it could be just that our streets are, look and feel like places where you can choose other modes of transportation, where you don't have to use a car to get places, because there are a lot of origin destinations in our city where a car is really the only way to do that.
Okay. And preserve our patchwork quilt, what does that mean?
I want to let Eric chime on that because he, he talks about it very eloquently.
Well, it's not, it's not our phrase, it's not my phrase. It came out of a council meeting back in April, I think. And the idea is that, I guess the preceding phrase was that Wheat Ridge is not a place, but it's a place of places. So there are some places that have kind of a coherent, single, physical identity. And Wheat Ridge doesn't really have that. It doesn't have like a clear downtown, it has a clear center, doesn't have clear edges necessarily, kind of bleeds into other places on the north and the east and the south sides. Yet within it, there are distinct areas of different characters. And so that's where the place of places idea came from. I think it was Janice Hoppe who came, came up with patchwork quilt. And that just stuck in everybody's brain. So as an important thing that came out of that conversation, it was some planners or urban designers might say, you don't want a place of places, you know, become one thing. And that is very much not in the minds of Wheat Ridge residents, as far as we can tell. But so instead of changing that, we're trying to preserve that, make the most out of that. Maybe it's polishing up some of those places, maybe it's connecting them better to each other. But in, in all cases, make sure we're making the most of it as it is. Does that make sense?
I just think it's a little bit difficult because I think people can read into that what they want to read into that.
Sure. I think there's also, we're giving you obviously just the, just the the titles here, and so you're lacking the descriptions. And so if we were to go through each of these, there are descriptions, more descriptive language that goes along with each of these, it sort of says more. I think also, Daniel, to your question about connecting, as this plan comes together, these things, the values and principles in particular, including the distinct pieces of what they are and how they're talked about, those will make their way into other things. So you see how it will flow all the way through. So people understand what they are, and then at each stop along the way through the plan, there'll be callbacks to those. So people understand that it's not like, it gets page 13 and something just came out of nowhere. Well, that thing is there because it responds to some value or some principle.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? We'll have lots of other discussion opportunities. So, all right, well, I will move us on here to, we're going to talk briefly about our focus areas. So in the coming months, the project team is going to be working on what we're calling prototype focus areas. So the purpose of these focus areas is to illustrate how key city plan priorities, basically everything on the previous page, could be addressed in real settings in Wheat Ridge. The improvements that the plan recommends in these focus areas will then become the prototype for other areas in the city facing similar challenges. So we chose these five areas shown on the right for a few reasons. So they address several of the hard-to-fix issues that we've been hearing about. The solutions that we develop as part of this plan can be used in other locations, and they're important locations within the community. So we'll go into detail on the information on this slide in our next phase, when we see you in early 2025. But I do want to provide just a high-level update or kind of a preview of what's to come. So this shows a list of focus areas in gray. And then in purple, you see the list of issues that could be addressed in each of the focus areas. So for an example, if you look on 44th from Clear Creek to Independence Street, we'll be working on several things, but one of them is developing better low-impact bike and pedestrian improvements. And then once we figure out the right recommendations for that focus area for 44th, we could use that in other locations to inform similar improvements. And then another example on there is that we'll be looking at how to facilitate neighborhood-serving businesses in the Ward TOD area. So these are currently being refined. We are, well, CZB is really working on them now. And then we'll review them with, with this group and with the public and, you know, through all of our, our Phase Four early next year. But any questions at this point?
Can I also add before, that when these are, when you see these down the line, it's not necessarily going to be framed as strong recommendations, like, well, we've sketched out the solution to these eight issues on this section of 44th, therefore make sure you do all eight the way we've sketched it out for the section. It's almost more like a thought experiment. Okay, how would you solve this problem? And if you, if the city decides it wants to solve that problem on that stretch of 44th, great, then we've written that down for you. And if the city decides that actually there's a similar situation somewhere else, they can sort of pick up that solution and move it over there to a place that's not on our list. So that's kind of the, that's the point of it. So.
Yeah, I mean, maybe this is a definition thing. What does low-impact bike and pedestrian improvements mean?
I'll jump in and then I think Eric will elaborate. So what I was, what you asked about earlier, the kind of bike and pedestrian improvements, so this, we know, and we've heard specifically at this location, that people want better ways to get around by biking and walking. We also know that we're not about to tear up and redo all of 44th. So when we're talking about low-impact, we're talking about kind of the, like striping and signing, the, the lower-cost kind of low-hanging fruit ways to do that that aren't like Wadsworth 2.0. You know, we know we're not going to do that across.
So it probably would be better if it was said low-cost bike and pet improvements.
I think we could add that. I think it is also low-impact to what's out there, but yes, the cost is certainly a driving factor. Eric, and Eric, this is your expertise, so I want to let you jump in too.
That's fair enough. We're not, we're not necessarily strongly wed to all of our descriptions either, so those kinds of critiques of the exact way things are described is helpful to us as well. But yes, low, certainly low cost, and then also physically low impact. Can't always move curbs, don't always want to move curbs, sometimes paint, just paint is the answer. So that kind of falls into that category.
Okay. Can I ask Commissioner Shelkey a clarifying question on that? Is the concern, or not the concern, that, you know, that you pointed out because low-impact could maybe convey that adding a bike lane doesn't accomplish that much change in terms of bike, pedestrian, when in fact a low-cost measure could have a high impact on, for instance, the amount of bike traffic. Like it's a matter of what the impact is on, I think, maybe that, if that makes sense.
That's true.
Not like impact just on the physical concrete, but on behavior.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That's a very good point. Yes, and I think we can, Eric said, I am taking, I am going to be furiously typing down all your suggestions here. So that's, that is exactly why we're here, to try and identify these things and fix them before they're in a plan.
And if I could just, if I could just hop in, if everyone could move their mics close to them, we want to make sure the audio is good on this. So get right up in there. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions at this point?
I had a question. I just was curious the relationship between how these issues were identified and the priorities. Because I think we spend a lot of time talking about, like, the, where we want to be, but I just wasn't sure how these specific issues related back to that.
Some of them are directly connected. So for example, if you, the priority we have that's improved business and retail environment, and then our category here that is neighborhood-serving business, clearly it's almost a one-for-one. They match up perfectly well. Same is true, the priority that's about the, the non-motorized network. We've got the bike-ped improvements. And so some of those match up extremely well, very clear. Others, maybe it's fair to ask the question, well, how did that get in there? Where did that come from, based on what we just talked about in the last few minutes? And there's, the priorities are a discrete set of things in the plan that the community said, these are things we really want. And there's a, the priorities are a discrete set of things in the plan that the community said, these are things we really want to get done. You know, we, we want this thing, that thing, the other thing. Let's fuse this plan to figure out how to get those things. But that's not all that the plan does. The plan also has to speak to a handful of other things in the transportation realm, in the land use realm, in the, the way the city thinks about regulating development, et cetera. And there are a few other ones. And so those are here as well, or there are categories of these eight that speak to those issues as well. Those are just things that a normal comprehensive plan ought to do, that the city plan will do. That Invision Wheat Ridge today, you know, does some of that as well. So that's kind of how that list got built out. Priorities are in there, yes, but then some other things that are just kind of meat and potatoes stuff for a comp plan. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And I would say it was rounded out by a few things that are of just kind of particular community interest here in Wheat Ridge, or seem to be, you know, vexing, I guess on a spectrum from mild to severe vexing issues that just pop up over and over again, that we thought might be fun to try and figure out how to solve that.
Okay, I'm going to hand it over to Eric to walk us through our draft place type framework.
Okay. This is where we're going to spend a lot of time tonight. There, want to let everyone know upfront, this is a bit high level. You're going to have a lot of questions and it's totally great to have questions. And we'll have some answers and then we won't have some other answers because this is very much, you know, we're not here presenting a finished plan tonight. We're in the middle of this process. And so we're kind of building this airplane as we fly it, if you will. That's how these processes work. They're iterative, you know, we do a little bit, get an idea, share it with the community council planning commission, get the feedback and then move on. So your questions will be useful, just helping us figure out what questions we've got to answer that aren't answered yet. But just know that if we don't have an answer here tonight, it's just because we're still in process. We also, I think, have learned a little bit in the conversations around the place types so far, that there are things about it that can be a little bit hard to grasp. So we'll try to iron those out as much as we can, based at least on where we are now, understanding again that we have a ways to go. The place type framework is sort of our take on a future land use map. And a future land use map in comprehensive plans is generally, it's a, it's a map of your entire community. It's got a lot of colors on it. It's not the zoning map, but it says kind of what uses should go where. Where should the commercial stuff go? What kind of commercial stuff? Suburban commercial stuff, urban commercial stuff? Where is the appropriate place to put those? Residential, single family detached houses, where should those go? Where should apartment buildings go, et cetera, et cetera? And we find that to be limiting very often and not as helpful as we think that kind of tool could be to a community that's thinking about how to, how to maximize its future. You have a, a plant, a, a map that's kind of like that in the current Invision Wheat Ridge. I'm not sure if you're all familiar with it. I believe it's called the structure plan. And it's a single page, it's a map, it calls out the corridors, calls out the residential neighborhoods. And that's been useful in its way. It's served its purpose in the lifetime of the Invision Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan. But we think that given where the community is now and the issues that it's facing now versus what it was facing in 2008, nine, 10, that it can get a better and more evolved tool to help guide future investments, capital investments, and private development and the regulation of private development as the city goes forward. So that's the preface. And what you're going to see as we go through this, are you're going to see nine different place types on the Wheat Ridge map. Four of those are residential, we'll talk through those. Five primarily residential. Five of those are primarily non-residential. They are these place types, they're a combination of land use, as I just said, does include land use. We don't think land use goes far enough, but it also has character elements as well. And we think that's going to be the key. And then later we'll talk about how the place types that incorporate character elements as well as land use can, are then going to be enhanced even more when we cross it with the, the mobility framework. But we'll get to that later. And as you look at these, as we talk about them, I want you to think about two things. Because a lot of these maps, you'll look at them, you'll say, oh, that makes sense. That looks like the Wheat Ridge I know. And then you'll ask yourself, wait a minute, isn't this a plan for like the future? You know, 10, 15 years, 20 years from now? Why are we simply showing maps of what it is today? And what I would ask you to do is stretch your mind just a little bit and think about the ways in which these maps reflect, yes, today's reality, but how also as we talk about the future of these place types, we can think about making the places better, doing that polishing, doing that connecting that I talked about a few minutes ago. Did not have the presence of mind to describe this to city council, but I will do it for you. I think a good way to think about these place types is like, think of them like a teenager. You know, they're some percentage of the way toward being who a person is going to be when they grow up, but they still have a ways to go. They're still changing, growing, developing to do, but they're fundamentally not going to be a very different person. If that makes sense. I guess apologies to all those who had major life changes on the way, but that's the best metaphor to come up with. Okay, so we're going to start first and run through these four largely residential place types. The first three are determined on a spectrum of housing variety. There's kind of a story as to how we got to that. We went through a number of ways to think about distinguishing residential areas in Wheat Ridge. And ultimately what seemed to be not the only determining factor, but a major determining factor was the, the variety in a place. So what you'll see here is our lower variety category. Generally this means it's dominated by a single housing type. And that is usually, but it's not always, single unit detached. So if you look at this, you'll say, oh yeah, that kind of looks like our, you know, our single unit detached neighborhoods. But then you'll look out to Clear Creek Crossing and you'll say, but that's not a single unit detached neighborhood. What's going on out there? It's also low variety, but it's a different kind of low variety. It's all, you know, it's all apartments, it's all multi-unit detached. So the implication there though, is that, and then common era of construction was also another determining factor. But as we go forward and we think about the future of lower variety residential neighborhoods, and as Ella talked about a few minutes ago, we have this concept of peaceful coexistence that's going to be a theme in the city plan. It's important to understand and be grownups about thinking about how different kinds of new development go in different places. Okay? Higher variety places can take something a little different more easily than lower variety places can. If you stick something in a lower variety place that isn't used to a lot of variety, and now it has something totally different, it's just going to be more challenging to deal with. So I think we can all understand that. I think it makes common sense. And I think we have ways to, to smartly deal with that in the city plan as we go forward. So just before we leave this slide, is the, through the nature of the description that I'm giving here, is this making sense? As you look at this map and think about what I said, does it click? Okay, that's good. So we're getting better at this then. This is the moderate variety neighborhood place type. There is a little less variety than you'll find in the lower variety category. It's not the highest variety category. Generally, what happens here is that we lose that domination by a single type. It might be a 75, 25 kind of split. It might be a 50, 50 kind of split, but it's far below the 90, 95, 100% domination that you see in the lower variety. So that's why we call it moderate. This is the highest variety category. We get the widest variety of types, widest variety of construction eras. One of the things that really makes the difference to get a part of the city into the highest variety neighborhood place type is the presence of 20th century rental properties. So these are not the West 38th, these are not the Edison, these are not the, the parallel up at Ward TOD type properties. These are smaller scale, often sort of 1960s, you know, eight, 12, kind of maybe 1624, kind of that scale of number of units in a property. And these are scattered all throughout Wheat Ridge. I'm sure you all know of them very well, see them all the time. Where you'll find those, you will find this, this description in our minds of a, of a higher variety neighborhood.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So you, these were determined through analyzing data about year built type of home, this kind of thing. Because it seemed, and I'm just kind of curious, because I don't, maybe I don't know the town, part of towns well. But this, oh, on the previous one, on higher variety, the area in the southwest over there? It surprises me. I just, it just caught my eye when I was looking at this, that, that.
Are you talking about that kind of, that block on 38th?
Yeah, like measuring cup looking thing at the bottom. I, I was just, it caught me off guard thinking, really? Like I didn't realize that that area, as far as I understand it, has that, fits that description.
There are, there's quite a bit of variety there. There's some deep parcels there. And so you might not realize it just driving up and down 38th. But if you spend a lot of time in Google Maps, you can go and explore and you'll see the different housing types that are back in there.
So kind of to, to talk about what Daniel had just said, that's my hood. So that's, it's, it's a lot of mix of like single family. And then you got some smaller like apartments that are really, that aren't really big. And then you'll have some bigger apartments and it is kind of a hodgepodge of buildings that are there. And then like where Counselor Weaver lives is one of those long, deep.
Yeah, I knew fried bridges over there. And I guess I was just reminded that there is kind of a higher amount of multifamily relative to the city at large, even though it's a little further out of the way. It's interesting.
The final one here is what we call Transit Village, which is at the TOD. Obviously high density resident, residential around rail station and some integrated limited commercial uses there as well.
Can I jump in on that too?
Sure.
Was, did this process include any discussion about down the road within the timeline that the plan is considering? If there may be a part of the map that could have color on it? This process, is it an opportunity to talk about where would be the next transit village? If we were to do that kind of thing? Cause sometimes that kind of nudge can get the wheels moving even with regard to transportation districts and things like that.
Sorry, just got to reconnect here. Do you want to take that?
I think that we, I mean, the, this tool is intended to capture that kind of future. As we've been in the plan process and talking to people and hearing about Wheat Ridge and where it's headed and, we don't actually anticipate there will be huge changes like that. But I think if, if there are and, or we need to be marking that, this would be the place to do that. I just think, Eric, you, I think you've talked about that really well of just, we, we don't anticipate huge change here.
There's not, there's been nothing in our, say two things. We've been, as a firm, we've been working in Wheat Ridge since the mid 2000s. I've personally been working here, this is my third project here since 2017, 2018, something like that. And I think both through our history of doing planning work and planning related work here and in this process, we don't hear a big change for like, let's make Wheat Ridge into something different. Let's, let's fundamentally, you know, let's, let's pull a U-turn, let's go in another direction. Let's really build this thing out. That's an important thing, I think, because in some places you could just sort of get there through complacency, through inertia. That's not the case in Wheat Ridge, because Wheat Ridge actually has opportunities that don't exist. It's become different, that don't exist in a lot of other communities. Your location in this, in the state, in this metro, specifically within a certain part of this metro, land values, I mean, if the city decided it wanted to become a very different place, it could plan to be a very different place. That is on the table, absolutely, due to the market forces here. But the community has been quite clear, I think, about saying, you know, we kind of like who we are. And we don't want to fundamentally change. Again, we, yeah, could we do some, some things a little better here or there? Could we upgrade some things here or there? Of course, let's become the best version of ourself. That's what Wheat Ridge seems to be after. So when that is the context within which we are planning and to which we're trying to be respectful, then the last thing that we're going to do, I think, is, you know, draw a circle on this map somewhere and say, we have an idea. Why don't you go become really different right there? You know, why don't you, something you really haven't talked about as, as a community, something that maybe nobody has asked for. I have a smart idea, you know, I'm a planner from out of town, why don't I put that on the map? I don't think that's a very good idea for us, personally speaking. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely. And I could, I, I really appreciate the answer. I can totally respect that. I guess I was just, you know, just thinking about the effort put into this and if there's going to be data or, you know, something that could inform future decision-making, you know, in addition to whatever kind of conversations are had down the road. But, you know, just, just a curiosity really.
Sure, and then let me add one last thing, sorry Ella, is that we think part of the reason it's so important to get these place types right is because we, there are a lot of opportunities in Wheat Ridge that actually are there without becoming dramatically different. So gradual evolution, small bits of incremental development, redevelopment over time can really kind of take, we, help Wheat Ridge go to its next, its next place as a community. And so that's, that's not going to look like sort of one big spot in town that becomes really different. It's going to be about carefully curated and managed change in a lot of places. So that's, that's really what we're, what we're after here.
And I think that some of the aspirational part of this will be evident in the detailed descriptions of each place type. I will send those to you. There was no way, I mean, you're, there, there was no way to get it all in a slide. It's, it's too deep a dive for this, but I will share them with you because we've been very careful to try to craft those. And again, they are draft and we welcome your feedback. But we've been trying to craft them so they're familiar to the places that they are mapping currently, but they are aspirational. For example, for the, the places along our corridors, we, we edited out having like their parking is on, is, is between the street and the building. Because yes, that's how it is now, but we don't actually want to invite that, more of that in the future. We want to, so, so I think in the place types, I would, I recommend looking at those descriptions closely because that's where I think you'll see those aspirational opportunities.
And I would add just one more thing, and that is even though this is a plan looking forward 20 years, it doesn't mean that there, that it's not going to be amended in, say, the next 10 years as things, because it's, it's, while it's a static plan now in a sense, the long range planning efforts are always more dynamic and they, they have to kind of ebb and flow with the community's desires.
I think Eric's history in, just in the work that he's done, the, the difference in Wheat Ridge is the, the kind of, the, the appetite for change is changing quickly. And so I think there, there could be a very different sentiment in 10 years when it's time to update this again.
And that's why you do them every 10 or 15 years. So this is what it looks like when you put them all together. This is the, kind of the collage of the residential places. And we want to point out here, we'll come back to this as well. But if you look at the, the way that these lay on top of each other and next to each other, in some cases both, I guess it's always tricky to, as things export and then end up on a, you know, PowerPoint on a slide and then on a, on a screen in front of you. I'm unsure whether you can see what's intended or not exactly. But for example, if you look at 38, between Wadsworth and Harlan roughly, you can see there's kind of a, almost a third color. You know, the stuff to the north, the stuff to the south. And then in the middle on 38, there's kind of a different third color. And that's not a third color, actually. That's just those two things sitting on top of each other. And that's an example of how the way this tool is going to work is you're going to have these fuzzy boundaries and these overlapping place types. Because it's not always clear where one ends and one, and the next one begins. And that'll be important and we'll talk about why in a few minutes. Let's go now, well, we can stop if there's any other questions on the residential before we leave that. We can always come back to it, but is everyone good on this for now? Okay. Let's go now to the, the non-residential types. And there are five of them. We've got, and they all, four of them have the suffix of mixed use district. The first one is for the Main Street Mixed, Mixed Use District. And this is along 38. This is the community center. Whether you want to call it Wheat Ridge's downtown or not, it is sort of the community's commercial center. It's a gathering place, civic and social and cultural importance. That's true in a number of spots. It's going to become probably more and more true as, as the Lutheran redevelopment takes shape. It's a place where you have a lot of shopping and dining opportunities. And there's usually when we're using this, we're using this as a unique place type. In other words, it's describing kind of one chunk of the city. There aren't multiple of them. Cause you might ask, well, isn't, can you just call 38 a place? It's kind of like 44th, it's kind of like, you know, Kipling, Kipling in some way, making that up. And the answer to, as we see it is no, there's kind of only one 38. Kipling, Kipling in some way, making that up. And the answer to, as we see it is no, there's kind of only one thirty eighth. There's only one, thirty eighth is one kind of place. There's not another like it. So it's unique. If you're not on thirty eighth and you're somewhere else, then actually, I'm gonna do these a little bit out of order, then you might have something else that we're calling community mixed use district. Generally, it's a, it's a mix of commercial uses. It has variable building sizes, property sizes, often auto oriented. This is a place where you'll, you will find also some multi-unit residential uses as well. Going up again in scale is the regional mixed use district. That's really kind of your, your you're really truly auto oriented is trying to appeal to motorists, people who are driving by at fairly high speeds, on fairly high volume roads. Buildings are large, properties are large, parking lots are large. Again, this is also a place where you're, you're gonna find multi-unit residential. And then go back down again to the small scale. When you're not in the mixed use dis, main street mixed use district, but you're in kind of a neighborhood-y type mixed use district, like you got in forty fourth, like you got in twenty ninth. To some extent, like you've got down at, at Gold's, at on Kipling. It's kind of a, you know, neighborhood oriented, more community locally oriented for, for folks who live in town mostly. So everything's smaller scale. You've got most smaller scale buildings, smaller scale properties in general, tends to be the most walkable. Pedestrian access is prioritized over high speed motorist access. And parking generally is behind, behind the buildings, not always, but generally, or it's what we'd like to have happen.
A quick comment?
Sure.
Thanks. Thanks, everyone. Thank you. I just want to take the opportunity to suggest considering east forty fourth avenue or, or just looking at whether or not it could be considered the neighborhood mixed use, the east section of forty fourth. I know you already have west of Wads over by the creek and Anderson Park and all that. I, I'm full disclosure, just speaking about my own neighborhood and I just can, I think that it's probably one of these fuzzy areas.
True.
But there's a lot of promise and I've said here many times, it's a more important corridor than I think it gets credit to because it's an entryway into the city from some very unusual communities. And I don't know, I, I just, and there's a lot of, you know, it's got a park on forty fourth as well. It's got plenty of walkable businesses and I, that's the type of description that I personally would like to see the direction of that commercial stretch going. So I'm just being a complete neighborhood homer.
Well, listen, whether you're being a homer or not, whether you're being a homer or not, it's, it's a valid question and a point. And one of the things that we're gonna, why we're here tonight is trying to figure out like, do we have these right? You know, are these boundaries right? Do we have the right places and the right categories? And some of these, it's not a hundred percent clear. I mean, it may have been a judgment call that we made along the way to say, you know, that, that stretch feels to us more like our community mixed use description and less like our neighborhood mixed use description. But that doesn't mean we're totally right. You know, we could, we could be off or it could really be on the line, you know? So we appreciate that very much.
Let, let me talk a little bit about twenty ninth.
Sure.
It's an interesting little section and, you know, full disclosure, I lived there. It's not pedestrian friendly. It's not, it's high traffic. It's a lot of speeding. It's the fastest way downtown for people to take twenty ninth and they know it. And so that's what they take. And I don't know how you have it categorized there, but walkable retail where pedestrian access is prioritized. I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay.
Think that's around the meat market.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's very dangerous to cross the street.
Would you, should, would, do you have an aspiration that it would be a safer, more pedestrian oriented place?
Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely. And I'm glad it's one of the focus areas there.
Yeah. Because it may be that that's something we've got to think about too, is the extent to which, when we're talking about this, some of them might be better fits for, what is it today? And some of them might be better fits for what do we hope it will become? And the beauty of the place type is you can kind of squeeze either one of those into the place type.
That place feels like it could become a little secondary main street. Like just a couple of blocks long, but
Right.
It has that feel.
Yeah, definitely.
Could be an area for for a future to, as a future mainstream mixed use service, kind of mainstream, secondary mainstream. Right now, thirty eighth is it.
Right.
Twenty ninth, that, that spot is cute and it's, it's nice. It has a nice feel.
Will, can you speak more into your microphone?
I didn't even have it on.
The twenty ninth, I was just mentioning that, that twenty ninth node that Jonathan was mentioning could be sort of a secondary main street for the city outside of thirty eighth avenue. It just has a nice feel, that twenty ninth barn grill that the mayor owns. And then that whole meat market area is just, it's like kind of a cute area. So pedestrian improvements to get people safely across the street, maybe some push button flashers or maybe make it feel a little bit safer.
And it, and it also kind of ties in with what's going on in Edgewater. There's an awful lot of traffic that goes across twenty ninth that's heading down the Edgewater and vice versa. And as you head down the Edgewater, they all have the push button pedestrian crossings. Till you get into Wheat Ridge and then they don't.
And just to pile on that too, I think going towards Denver, there's a lot of commercial development that is walkable just on the other side of Sheridan on twenty ninth. And so like thinking about this from the corridor, not just Wheat Ridge itself, like where are people already traveling? I think that is an area that has potential.
Well, that's definitely, and Denver already, and they're getting a lot of heat about it. They're talking, they're gonna do a protected bike lane on twenty ninth. So you get across Sheridan and I was just there today and the, one of the news outlets was there today interviewing some of the people that live there because they're gonna lose their parking spots on the street. So a lot of people aren't happy about that, but the reality is they're gonna do something, I think, on the other side of Sheridan in terms of making that a safer biking experience.
Well, our, our last non-residential type here is what we call the general production center. And these are really the parts of town that are connected to the nuts and bolts part of the economy, making stuff, moving stuff, industrial uses, fabrication, manufacturing, processing, shipping, warehousing, that kind of thing. And if you, any of you are familiar with the business prosperity plan, that is, if it's not done, done, it's nearing its conclusion. That has a strong focus in there on maintaining these kinds of places in Wheat Ridge, to keep the economy diverse, to support employment, et cetera. Right? So if you, just like we have the, the collage of all the residential types, this is what it looks like for the non-residential types. And if we advance one more, see how it all comes together. And again, I want to call out that the fuzzy boundaries and the overlaps are gonna be a key part of this. And it's gonna, there's gonna be a lot to do with those overlapping fuzzy boundaries and transition areas in the city plan as we move forward. And there's some implications there. So we talked about, you know, if you're not, if new development wants to take happen in a place where it's not really clear, you know, where does one kind of place begin? Where does another kind of place end? If it's not carefully thought through, you can get possibly the wrong thing in the wrong place. If it's not handled carefully, it can create conflict. A lot of agitation about something being not done the right way or not being in the right location. So we've got to be thoughtful in how the plan deals with those transition areas. So that's one. Again, the second point here is, as I said a few minutes ago, the, the different levels of housing variety in those residential types, that's gonna be a big thing as well, to make sure that we are being sensitive to how much variety a place has and therefore kind of what it can deal with more easily or less easily. And again, to that phrase peaceful coexistence. So whether we're talking about different levels of housing variety, whether we're talking about transitional areas, we're gonna be trying to figure out how to facilitate peaceful coexistence. We're gonna be trying to include instructions in these place types that account for those things. So that down the line is things like development proposals and rezoning requests in particular come into city hall and then, you know, make their way to places like Planning Commission, that there's good backup and guidance in the city plan because it may be that envision Wheat Ridge being the, the era in which it was written and the purposes for which it was written. Given all that, that maybe it just isn't doing that job as well today as we might like. And so how do we kind of update that thinking? How do we update those instructions? So that when those requests come through, you can go to the plan and say, oh, okay, we understand, you know, where this is. We understand what's intended for that place. And he gives us some instruction about how to think about managing that new development. I think that's really it on place types for now. Except if there's any more discussion around these questions.
So we wanted to ask, and we can talk about it a little bit tonight. Are these the right place types? Are the geographies accurate? And then thinking a little bit about, I don't know if any of you were at the meeting and, and kind of witnessed or participated in our peaceful coexistence exercise, but talking about what are the most common issues that could be better managed to achieve peaceful coexistence between new development and established residential neighborhoods? So I just want to mention here, as I said, I will be sharing the map series. Well, you have the map series, but I'll also be sharing a higher resolution full map as well as the Word document with all the descriptions. And we invite you guys to look those over as carefully and closely as you want and provide comments there. However, so, so we don't have to, we don't have to go into every nook and cranny of what, what needs to be changed tonight. However, we do welcome any discussion on things like what you mentioned that you saw where you were like, oh, that doesn't seem quite right or why is this that way? So I just want to open up the floor and here's some prompting questions or just any other thoughts that you all have had as we've gone through this.
I just would agree that maybe, I, I think, Will, maybe you said it was a secondary main street mixed use. I don't know if that would be a different category or what, but I, I know councillor Holtine mentioned that at the study session or whatever it was a week or so ago, that she felt real similar that that little stretch of forty fourth would be more of a mains, well, both, both. Yeah, and I don't, I don't know if that's a ideal or not, but you know, yeah, something, you know, like a secondary, a little bit different shade of green.
And what, can, I just, I wanted, in my notes, I want to understand what, both of your comments, what section of forty fourth you are talking about.
I think, Dan, you were talking the same as Rachel, maybe from Sheridan. Yeah, Pierce-ish, maybe. Yeah, just the other side. Well, the park is a little bit more west of Pierce, isn't it?
Uh, well, Hopper Hollow is like off a Kendall. Is that, if that's
Yeah.
But it'd be Harlan. It wouldn't be Sheridan.
Yeah, talking about Hopper Hollow, between Sheridan and Harlan, yeah, because, I mean, I'm sorry, between Harlan and Pierce.
Yeah.
Yeah, Harlan and Pierce, because Sheridan and Harlan is where you go Lakeside, Lakeside on one side, Mountain View on the other side, and then Harlan you hit.
There you go. Yeah, I, I just think it seems to be a theme and maybe that little piece of twenty ninth that you were talking about where where the, the Wheat Ridge poultry and all that is, is, is kind of a main street. There's a lot of them kind of over in that neighborhood, actually.
But they wouldn't be a main street. They would just be a business center. Because we, we don't need two main streets.
Well, no, my suggestion was about, there was a, it's currently in like the community mixed use or whatever it's called, and then there's a neighborhood one. Yeah, I was, my comment was to consider that section of forty fourth between Harlan and Pierce as whether or not it could be qualified as the neighborhood mixed use rather than the community mixed use. I didn't suggest necessarily that it would be a main street mixed use, although I think it's worth considering in terms of the aspirational thing. I mean, I will say that I think that thirty eighth and what we call the main street section is going to feel twice as much like that when this park project is completed, that's happening right now. Because it will be a unique kind of, I mean, when you think of Old Town Nevada, it's, they has the square. I mean, I did a farmer's, I sold vegetables at a farmer's market there for years, you know? It has that public space. And this is what the green is gonna offer thirty eighth, where, well, I think it'll really tie it together. It's like the big Lebowski, that rug ties it all, ties the room together. Yeah, really, really ties the room together. So I think, you know, that's something to think about because it will feel different, I think. And like twenty ninth, for instance, the only thing I wonder about that is like, is there open space? Because I think that's kind of a critical element for a main street, you know? If, if not open space, then a pedestrian dominated commercial area that is not allowed to be driven through kind of thing, then that can transform into that. But as it sits now, I think as kind of Jonathan was saying, it's a little tight in terms of the, the, the public space.
So, and I'm thinking about twenty ninth, but there could be other areas. You know, Wheat Ridge is not an island, you know, it's very much impacted about what's going on, what its neighbors are doing. And I think on that twenty ninth street section, as we've said, it's very much impacted by what's going on in Denver and what's going on in Edgewater. And we, I think we have to look at it that way, because, because those, those really impact it. To your number three right there that you have up there. So maybe this is a real, to me, a real life example.
Please, yeah.
So on twenty ninth, we had a service station that fixed cars for years and years and years. People have houses right next to this service station. Now that service station is proposed to be a bar. So I think that's one of the areas where you gotta say, how, how do you peacefully coexist with that? And I know in some communities, they do something called a good neighbor contract, where basically the new facility, the new bar makes assurances to the neighborhood about their hours, let's say, that they're gonna be open. And you notice that a lot of places, a lot of communities, when there's a microbrew or whatever in a neighborhood, they don't stay open late. And so I think that's something we have to pay attention to.
You, sir, get the gold star for tonight because it's, it is actually, that's one of the examples that we've been talking about a lot in this project and is, I don't know if it's explicit in the meeting in the box facilitated conversation around peaceful coexistence that we put together. But it was that section of twenty ninth is, and that was what was in our mind as we put that together. Yes. Because it's a great example. It's a relevant recent example. And what we know is that the, the desire in the community for more neighborhood serving businesses like that, you know, my coffee shop, my corner bar, whatever it is, that's something people want more of. However, sometimes when those proposals come forward, there's a lot of opposition on the grounds like the ones that you just described, and that's totally natural. So the question is, okay, people say they want this. It's gotta be next to somebody's house. So how are we gonna make that work? How do we have those things peacefully coexist? Absolutely. Operating hours is one of them. Noise, deliveries, parking and access, all that stuff. Those are all things that have to get, be thought through. And we want to use this plan to create those instructions to, again, to the future. I guess the code, whatever various parts of the code, certainly zoning, but there may be other parts as well that can regulate that properly so that those things can be accepted into the community, but they can also be good neighbors like that.
I'll chime in real quick. I, I mean, that, I think it's a, it's a good example in terms of the commercial, you know, the question of what types of commercial activity is gonna be in proximity to residential. I think when I read the question, one of the first thing that comes to my mind actually before that is just types of residential and like the pushback that could happen when there's multifamily development proposed in an area. And I wonder about kind of how the city plans on responding to somebody like in my neighborhood. You know, I'm on that forty first in between Pierce and Harlan, so it's the higher variety neighborhood. And I have a number of neighbors who would maybe read this. And I have a number of neighbors who would maybe read this and then say, well, you know, to what extent is that going to affect me as a lower variety homeowner? In what you're characterizing as the higher variety neighborhood? Am I to expect, and I'm not speaking personally, but just kind of from some of my neighbors, you know, like, am I to expect like a concerted effort to like maximize that area for higher density development? Or you know, I mean, like, because I imagine there'll be some single family, large lot Wheat Ridge homes like in that neighborhood who might kind of react to some of that depiction with a little bit of trepidation, you know?
That, yes, we know that, we expect that. The reality is we, that, part of the reason that neighborhood has the higher variety place type is because it's already higher variety. So in other words, if someone said, well, we're a single unit detached neighborhood, the answer would be, you're not actually. You have a lot of different housing types going on there. So the question we would want to answer really is, if someone says, well, I don't like multifamily. We would say, that's really unhelp, thank, thank you for your comments, really unhelpful actually. Because we need to know what it is about it that you don't like. Is it, it's too tall? Is it that it's, it's, not only is it too tall, it's too tall and too close to the property line? So if you're used to living next to a place that has a big setback, or you're used to living next to a place that is only one story. Now someone's going to be six feet off your property line and, and 30 feet in the air. That's a big change. Is that what it is? Is it the fact that the site doesn't have enough parking for the number of units that might be proposed? And they're all be parking on the street? Is that what it is? Is it all of that? Is it something else? So those actual particular specific attributes, those are the things that we are trying to get a handle on so that we can make sure that the instructions for regulation can handle those. So because we know that there's going to constantly be new development pressure in Wheat Ridge. That's just, that is the nature of the beast.
Yeah.
And it's not going to work to say, I know, let's just not do anything ever anywhere. And so, again, peaceful coexistence, right? How do you get new stuff to, to come in, but to be a good neighbor, to be context sensitive, to not be done the wrong way? And it may be that there are trade offs involved. Sometimes what the private sector often is trying to do for obvious reasons is maximize the land. Trying to get the most out of the least. When you have limited parcels and you, and they're not particularly big and you paid a lot for it. You know, you're trying to figure out how do I get as many units as I can get? It may be that in every case, you can't, you can't maximize the land. That there have to be some, some governing regulations on there that say, I'm sorry, I know you'd like to be right up to the property line, but this is, that's not going to work in this case. And so we're, we will not give you a rezoning to a zoning designation that does that. We would potentially consider one that gives you a zoning designation to something else that is higher density than it has now. But it's not going to go all the way to what you want. And if that means you can't do your project, then you can't do your project. And that's, that's what grown up planning is like.
And I, I, that's highlights one reason I really, I like the categorization by variety. Because let's say it's high variety. It doesn't mean, you know, all maxed out apartments, green light, go ahead. It means high variety. So you might get to a point where you're like, we don't have enough of the lower density or we don't want to lose more of the lower density to maintain that. So I think it's, that really calls to mind the patchwork quilt to me and maintaining these place of places where it's not saying like, you, you know, do whatever you want, it's high variety. It's, it's just a much more nuanced way of looking at that. And it, it's, as Eric said, grown up planning and it will, it will allow and expect a little bit more nuance from staff, Planning Commission and City Council, but it will allow them, those bodies to react to a specific request for a specific site and look at what's actually happening on the ground there.
I also think it's important to, you probably all know this being a planning commission, but the city has the regulatory tools that it has. And there are many good ones. I'm sure Ella and Janet and Lauren would say they could always be better. But you can't just wave a magic wand and say, let's, let's change our zoning this way or change specific elements of a particular zone district that way. There has to be a policy basis to do that. It can't be just arbitrary. And so what the city plan, the job of the city plan is to set that policy basis for them to then go into the code later and make those updates, make those improvements, make those refinements. And they can do that because they have an adopted city plan that gives them that, that backup, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I think that it's important, just a couple of quick responses. I think it's important to emphasize the fact that it's already a diverse space. And that even though like you live on a single lot, it's important to be reminded of the fact that you actually have a lot of multifamily in your neighborhood and, you know, that's what gives it the character that you might not immediately realize that you like about it. But it, it does change the, the field. And then I guess I would just say like there's, when I, when I'm in the, in the neighborhood and I am coming from West Denver, seems to me that the bulk plane does have an effect in terms of a regulatory feature that maybe we have in place that isn't shared in the same way in neighboring communities. And, you know, I think, I don't know the status, I don't know people's opinions about it, but it seems to be something that addresses what I feel is the concern there. And the concern is simply, I'm making investments into a property that's a big lot. I'm concerned that my neighbor who has the exact same size lot could sell his house and it could become a completely different type of residential unit. And so when you have something like the bold plan that makes it visually, you know, more, you know, makes the aesthetic more agreeable for a large piece of development. I think that's an example of maybe.
It's a great example.
You know, what makes it.
Yeah, the bulk plan regulations are a sophisticated tool for a sophisticated place. And I think that things in that vein, more of them, better of them, hopefully will be in the future for Wheat Ridge, yeah.
Okay, well, if you don't have any other questions, we can move on to the mobility framework.
Okay. We're, we're not going to spend as much time on this, I don't think. Great conversation so far, and that was really the, the meat of it. But the mobility framework is probably no less important to the future of Wheat Ridge. And it's got a couple of pieces, we'll go through each of them here. And again, just like place types, there's still more work to do on this. This is still coming together and will be built out and will have more substance to it as we go forward. But essentially it's envisioning how the existing network can be increment, incrementally improved to help meet community goals in a practical manner. So again, if you go back to the phrase we're using earlier, low impact, you know, debating the, the meaning of low impact, definition of low impact. You could apply that broadly here. And essentially, the frame, the mobility framework is a map that you're looking at. It is, there's a lot going on here, so you can be forgiven for not taking it all in at once. I think everything Ella said earlier about taking your time, leaving this, this meeting, looking it over and providing comment is all fair game as well. After we're done here. But essentially, you know, you all know Wheat Ridge is a community of corridors. It tends to be that your north, south corridors are more regionally focused, serving a regional market, regional travelers. Your east, wests, setting aside people who are trying to take shortcuts to get from place A to place B, who maybe don't live in Wheat Ridge. But those east, west corridors do tend to be more community focused, more for Wheat Ridge residents, people who live here. Those correlate to size of the roadway, they correlate to speed, speeds and speed limits, they correlate to, to traffic counts in both cases. And so that really sets the stage for how mobility works in Wheat Ridge. And then of course, you've got a lot of your neighborhood streets that, that are sort of within those blocks that are created by the corridors. One particular challenge that everyone probably knows and why the corridors have such stresses on them, whether they're east, west or north, south, is because of the way that Wheat Ridge developed, there are a lot of places where there aren't sort of good connections. Sort of either between these bigger blocks between corridors or across them. And so as we think about people who are pedestrians and cyclists who are not going to have the benefit or protection necessarily of being in the car every time they want to make a trip from somewhere to somewhere. Thinking about how we can enhance and increase those connections, those through, those inside connections, inside those sort of corridor by corridor blocks or across them, you know, more safely. We talked about 44th a little while ago, we talked about 29th a little while ago. Helping people who are not in cars get around better. So that's really a big focus here. This, the framework map does account for transit, does account for both buses and rail. And so again, just like in the place sites where you've seen a reflection of a lot of what things are today and then also an aspiration for the future at the same time. I would suggest that mobility framework is similar in that regard. So you're seeing a lot of things that are just calling out the way things are. There will be descriptions about how to enhance and improve those in certain ways. There will be descriptions and discussion about how those treatments will vary based on what place type they're running through. So a great example is 38th Avenue. 38th Avenue on the western end through a largely residential section does not look, feel, nor should it operate the same way it does on the eastern part of town, which is, you know, a very different set of land uses, a very different set of traffic considerations, et cetera. So a lot of that's going to be talked about in the plan as well. But the last thing I'll point out here before we move, take, move on and take questions is if you look at a lot of the little circles, little so, little dotted circles and a lot of those little pink and purple kind of ovals and blobs that are in certain spots. Those all relate to places where we think we could build better connections or where we could complete some gaps and things like sidewalks and bike lanes that don't exist. Where, again, low impact, where we think we could do some enhancements that would make a big difference. And would help build this network out, flesh it out and work better for people in Wheat Ridge. And hopefully do so in a way that's not, you know, extremely costly or extremely disruptive otherwise. So I'll pause there. That was a lot of me talking about what's on this map. And if you've got questions or suggestions, we'd love to hear about those now.
Okay. I have a question real quick. The little circles, are those roundabouts?
No, no, nope. Those are.
They're enhanced intersection crossings, so they're like pedestrian operated push buttons and things. So let's think about adding a circle to our little 29th F focus area we've been talking about. And I want to just mention the Rocky Mountain Ditch. We, we've been talking a lot about that, about that someday we aspire to have a High Line Canal-esque facility along the Rocky Mountain Ditch that's fully agreed to by the ditch company. So that's one of our kind of long-term goals that we've been talking about. That's it for me.
Um, I have a quick, so I, I appreciate seeing the enhanced intersection cross.
I would just jump in there and say, taking it all the way to Clear Creek Trail. Because that's one of the major ways to get on Clear Creek when you're east of Wad's.
All the way up Harlan.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think Pierce is a more direct route to the Otis Trailhead. I mean, you can take Harlan North and then be on low, you know, not busy residential streets. But I think the bike, I think Pierce with the lane is probably the easier way to get to the trail.
There's a, it, it may not pop right here, but one of the things we spent a lot of time thinking about is getting. Clear Creek Trail is obviously an incredible asset for Wheat Ridge. I don't think anybody would dispute that. But there are certain parts of town from which it is just difficult to get there. You know, you can get in your car, you can drive to a trailhead, okay. But for people who are not in a car, trying to sort of figure out how we can enhance some of those routes, how we can maybe enhance some, some access points. So that's something that is in, baked in here as well, that again, just might not come out as, as clearly. Okay, thank you. This is the last piece.
Um, sorry, can I jump in? I just wanted to take a step back. I love this map, but I, I'm curious about, you have the arrows going into the other communities. And my experience is that's not always what the other communities might draw back our direction. And so if you've taken a wider view of the regional mobility and how this map fits into that.
Yes. In particular on the trail, it's also a consideration on 35th. Just as we were talking earlier about potentially, you know, what's the, being forward looking about the role of 29th, for example, vis a vis what Denver might be doing, you know, 35th is in that category as well. I think it may be a little bit less true in the north, south direction.
Yeah.
For sure.
Although I would say Garrison is a major through north, south. And I don't see that connectivity here as well represented. Sure, sure, sure. No, but then you go through the neighborhood and like that north of Colfax, that it becomes like the neighborhood bike path. It's not a, not a bike lane, but I think it's a huge thoroughfare.
And Krista, are you, when you, are you thinking about all modes of, of travel or are you thinking about bike ped mostly?
I'm thinking about all, but I care most about bike ped.
Okay.
I think it, it is similar, like train of thought in terms of like you were talking about people going north, south, I think more than east, west, but I, I don't know if that was just for.
In cars, for sure.
In cars, right? I would actually argue it might be the opposite for recreational cyclists as opposed to transportation oriented cyclist. They probably go north, south more, but we have a huge contingent of Denver people who go to Golden through our community.
Yes.
And there's, you know, there's no one way to go. 32nd is the, I think, preferred method right now. But, but I think that brings a lot of people through our community. And if we could, you know, get them to stop at our new bars and coffee shops and, and, and the new places that are, are opening. I think that would be a huge victory for the community in terms of the small businesses that we could support. Because, you know, they go to Golden and they have a beer and then they come back to Denver, right? I mean, it's just like a thoroughfare. And so I wonder if there's, if there's more differentiation that we need to do between, again, that sort of transportation asset for bike ped versus recreation. Because not everyone's taking Clear Creek, right? We have a lot of people who prefer to go out on 32nd. And then this is kind of backtracking us a little bit, but it occurs to me when you were talking about the, the engagement of the plan, I'm just wondering what the like regional and planning entities, like how they've been involved in this process? If they've had any themes?
We, so there are other kind of planning efforts going on right now. Like the Jefferson County is working on theirs and they're, the person who's running that came to one of our meetings. So we, I think we've been mostly plugging into their coordination meetings. Just because they tend to be, well, the county one is a great way to all coordinate. And, you know, we're tracking a lot of the, the different projects that are going on in Denver, just through, through their pages. And kind of as, as we, as we get this together, this is a good reminder because I think we do, we should be, I know we have internal folks who coordinate and I need to make sure that they're kind of plugging in to get feedback from those, those groups. You know, we're, we have people like this group have been great at letting us know what projects are going on, but we should probably get that. but we should probably get that direct input as well.
Yeah.
And, and even through the other plans, like the pathways plan? Other departments are also coordinating some of those outreach efforts.
And just to circle back one more time on that 32nd byway between Denver and Golden, I, that's where I would draw my blue circles. Crossing Wadsworth and Kipling on 32nd is pretty terrifying. And I think there's a lot of traffic there.
That intersection at 32nd and Wadsworth, even for cars, is very dangerous.
Yeah.
Oh, that was just that accident.
Yeah. It's been like that forever.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess as a quick extension of that comment, I would just, you know, just encourage you to speak with our friends in Mountain View, my neighbors. You know, just as, just that, like, that likes very specific outreach to the neighboring communities, just to ensure that they're engaged, or just...
Yes, good, good reminder, thank you.
Okay. This is the last piece, the second piece of the mobility framework. Again, this is summary level, it's high level. Will be a bit like everything else we've talked about, we're going to be building this out more and also integrating these pieces together, because they're really not, none of this stuff really is separate, I think, as we all, as we all know. But as we have been thinking about these, the roads and the streets in the network and thinking about what it really means to get them to where, I think many people in the community would like them to be, it's also clear that there are, opportunities and constraints are very fluid and they vary by location. So what I mean by that is, you know, funding might be not available today to do, you know, an important transportation enhancements project, but it might be available tomorrow. And there may be places where there are a lot of opportunities, because for example, there's a lot of right-of-way to work with and there may be places where there's like no right-of-way to work with. And so simply saying, as we have done in certain places and many transportation people, planners, engineers, et cetera, often do is they say, here's your ideal cross-section of how a street should work. And here's how wide your sidewalk should be, and here's how wide your bike lane should be, et cetera, et cetera, depending on your traffic volumes. That's all well and good, but if you take that ideal version and then you go to where you may have an opportunity, whether it's today or whether it's in five or 10 or 15 years, and say, but I can't make this work here. Okay, so is that particularly helpful for me in my city plan? Don't know. So what we've been thinking about is more of a toolkit approach, which is to say, you have a bunch of elements and you may mix them and match them in different ways in different locations as those opportunities arise. And maybe you do things incrementally in one spot and you do a full road reconstruction somewhere else and you kind of, you know, go soup to nuts. It's just hard to know when those things will happen. A good example, I think, of this is the planning that's going on now for the 38th project and the way that that was thought about and the way that's being treated and the way that the approach is being customized for what is both wanted there, but also what's possible there. And we're thinking about that as a model, thinking about how we might say, you know, suggest thinking about mixing and matching the pieces from this toolkit and calling that back as a, as an example of how you might do that. You know, doing it in a way that really, really works for Wheat Ridge. It's not just about, you know, being rigid and inflexible about what has to be, but rather being pragmatic and being flexible about what can be. So we'll be talking more about that as we go forward. Yes, sir.
So 35th in Wheat Ridge was supposed to be a bikeway. There was an announcement of that. I don't think they've done anything with it yet. But if you go into Denver on 35th, keep going down, what they've done is the mini roundabouts in the neighborhoods. And personally, you know, when you're biking, I found those to be really great. And they don't look like they're a big deal to do, you know, construction-wise. And they're not like the full-born, you know, roundabouts and stuff. But they're in residential neighborhoods, asphalt in the middle, a little roundabout, and it slows traffic down really well. And I don't know if that's in our toolkit anywhere.
I don't know what it specifically is, but that seems like it'd be a good fit in our soon-to-be renamed Low Impact Kit.
Is, is the plan going to speak to the relationship between the other maps that we discussed regarding residential density and commercial activity with the mobility? Is it going to be like overlapped?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we just haven't gotten there yet. Yeah. We're actually very excited about that.
I'll put another quick plug on the record for Miller Street between 44th and Frontage. It's an active topic of discussion at the moment. I live it every single morning with kids at Compass. And you have, you know, a enhanced intersection crossing there, which is really appreciative. There has been pedestrian crash, you know, in recent, in that space. And so particular interest in how pedestrians are accommodated on that stretch as well. You've got it as a neighborhood bike street, but you've got two schools, as you can see, in the same block. It's a unique spot.
Yes, it is.
I think we've done a good job of, so floor's not closed, obviously. If there's any other suggestions about things that are missing from the framework, you know, on that map. And then our second question is the toolkit, toolkit approach. Question here is, is this toolkit approach the right one in your minds? But also, I think, along the lines of where we just started to go, are there maybe some things that you would like to see explored here that, that we've left off?
I mean, I like the framework of the toolkit. The one thing I think is missing, I see on the map, you have this low-stress bike corridor, but then there's no corresponding toolkit for it. So I was just curious, like, what, what that means and how do we, how do we think about protecting those low-stress bike corridors as we have more development?
That's a great, that's a great question. It's a great point. I think what we would generally be looking to do is, we want more, I think what we're after is more low-stress bike routes, right? And that doesn't necessarily, again, future, different phrase, low impact. But we're trying, we would like to all figure out together, and I think, I think actually cyclists in Wheat Ridge are the best resource to help us understand how it works now, is what are the sort of the unofficial low-stress routes? You know, you've got to go from here to there. You don't want to go on a main corridor. How do you do it? And there may be, everyone has the same answer, maybe six people have six different answers, don't know. But that's one, is identify what they are now, how they work now. That's one sort of thing we want to do.
Are you, are you using Strava data at all by chance? The Strava Metro data? So Strava is like this amazing app that you can track all your exercise, but they have a partnership with cities to, or cities can apply, I think, to get the data for their city to improve their, their mobility. Because it show, you can categorize your bike trips by, you know, transportation or, you know, whatever. Yeah, exactly, by the type of mobility, but also like if it's a commute versus a recreational. So they, and I don't know how hard it is to get Strava to work with you, but I know that they, that they have that program. So if that's the data you're missing, that could be a good way to...
We're not using that, that's a really interesting idea. Anecdotes also work. You know, people just saying, look, this is what I do. And we did, we, we are doing some of that, I think, with our disengagement round, both at the open house and it's still a possibility in the, in What's Up Wheat Ridge through October 11th. But I think what we would be looking to do is maybe be more clear about treatments for neighborhood streets. If you look at our, at the, this thing, our neighborhood streets and our district corridors, maybe be as explicit as we can about the application of those tools, the use of those tools, whether it's, you know, just as simple as sharrows or something, you know, more enhanced from that.
I think it, based on that question, that made me think it could be really helpful to turn to this plan and maybe either this toolkit or somewhere else in the plan. For, I think we have a lot of the neighborhood bike connectors on here that don't exist yet. They don't act as that yet. So what, when we're looking at that road, if something's happening on that road, what changes should be made to it? What needs to be true about it in order for it to function as a neighborhood bike connector? I think could be kind of the missing piece here, too. Any other thoughts or questions? We have, we have gone through a lot tonight, so. Great, well, I'm just gonna move us to summarize our next steps then. So next steps for you all first. As I mentioned, I will send, I will follow up with this email or with this meeting with an email where I share the higher-resolution maps, as well as all the place type descriptions. Then you'll have until next Friday to send those back to me. So I will get that to you tomorrow, so that you have a full week to do that. And you could just reply to my email and they'll be attached PDFs. So you can either detail in an email or comment and, you know, save and comment on the PDF, whatever works best for you. I will, I will accept all formats of comments. So those will be the immediate next steps for you. Next steps for the project team, so we're going to be reviewing the place type and mobility frameworks based on the feedback we've gotten from you here tonight, as well as city council, our steering committee, and everything we get from the public. We're going to continue working on that, as well as the peaceful coexistence concepts. Just change slide, why does it do that? Okay. I can't, I can't remember all the next steps, so I'm just going to do it in my slide. We'll also continue to work on those focus areas. So we showed you those two slides tonight, but we'll have a lot more content to bring to you next time that really illustrates all of, all of those topics and rounds out that information. And then we'll have our, our fourth round of engagement in February of 2022. So we haven't, we, we need to finalize the date for this group, but it'll be in the realm of February 2025. I think I said 2022 before. Who knows, wherever we are. So that's everything for tonight. Just one final reminder that the survey is still open. So if you or neighbors or anyone hasn't taken it, folks can still weigh in on, it's the peaceful coexistence and the mobility mapping until the end of the day, next Friday. I think otherwise, that is, that is all from us. Thank you so much for...
Thank you, this was great.
Engaging on this, these are great suggestions. I have a couple great pages of notes here. So we will, are excited to bring them all back to the, the table and integrate everything and we'll see you, we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Thanks for a great presentation.
Yep, thanks for your time.
All right. Next on our agenda is old business. Do we have any old business?
No old business.
New business, upcoming dates.
Yeah, thank you. As you saw, we're not going to have a meeting on the 17th. So that meeting's canceled for October. But getting into November and December, right now, the tentative dates that we absolutely sort of know that we're going to have meetings, we're, we're pretty sure. They're going to be November 7th, November 21st, and most likely on December 19th, which that changed from my earlier email today. So we may still have one also on, I'm sorry, did I say November? December 19th. And then December 5th is a maybe at this point. So let us know if you have travel plans and you're not going to be around or, you know, holiday, early holiday events or something like that. Just reach out to Tammy or myself or both and let us know so that we can be sure as soon as we can as to whether or not we have a quorum. Let's see, project updates. The only one that I had down here was the medical office building out there by the new Lutheran. Got its CO, that's a surgery center is within that. So everything's moving along nicely. We've got a lot of applications in over at Clear Creek Crossing. Thank you both. And so those are some of the ones that you're going to start seeing in November, December. So that's kind of exciting. And then probably into early next year, there'll be two or three others. So everything's really starting to pop out there. And that is all I have for updates.
Do I have any commissioner updates?
I, I have a quick one. Another fun local works event and it, it, that is in line with some of my comments about west, the east side of West 44th Avenue. There's a rad retro run back to the 80s. One-mile fun run, starting and ending at Hopper Hollow Park. Not timed, all just in good vibes, costume contest, 80s costumes. And then there's going to be a block party at Hopper Hollow Park following it, all for free. So if you're in the area and want to pull out some of your 80s gear that everyone has, whether they admit it or not, come join us. Oh, it's on, I'm sorry, it's on October 19th. Saturday the 19th runs at nine, party following.
Did I see that that building that's right next to Hopper Hollow, that's kind of, is it for sale?
That building's been for sale for probably 15 years.
Okay. I was all excited.
In case you're curious. And it is something that, I'm glad you mentioned it, because I'm thinking about, when we talk about additional Main Street and just potential, you've got Hopper Hollow Park and that's the neighboring property that's a similar size, very deep. The city might want to consider that for public space in the future, but it's been for sale for a long time. And, and I have heard some comments from neighbors about their frustration with the fact that it's an eyesore and, you know, but that's a different conversation, so.
And then also whoever decided to paint the auto repair bright yellow should probably be talked to as well.
That is bright, that's kind of like the, the one next to Ricoli's on Wadsworth. You could see that thing from space, but...
All right. I just want to commend the commissioners for your thoughtful questions. I could tell that you guys put a lot of thought into it and I'm really thrilled that we're such a good group. So pat yourself on the back. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose? We are adjourned.